And so audio and video are on.
Four two out. If you rise please, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John Brotherton?
Here.
Mova Johnson? Katie Johnston?
Here.
Diana Mendoza?
Here.
Nikki Pettit?
Yes.
Joe Robinson?
Here.
Tyler Wilson?
Here.
Next item is the agenda, the emissions corrections and more cases. See now, would you like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda, removing and correcting items as presented.
I'll second it. Joe second it.
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Joe Robinson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Public comments are next, and we have two signups. Dawn, you're up.
Okay, I was waiting for somebody else, but you want me?
No, this is our time.
Okay, okay. No, I was just saying I was still waiting on the supervision, and then I had the stakes that we had issues with this morning. And then, I don't know if you guys got the Board of Ed-
What issue are you talking about now?
Huh?
What issue were you talking about?
I was talking about the issue with the monitoring for the kids. We still have an issue with that. So I don't know if you guys got the Board of Education call, which I talked to them, and they said that there is somebody supposed to be at Eastland monitoring the kids with all the kids out there. So I don't know if you just got the call from the Board of Education. And I had made a formal complaint about the kids and the fighting outside.
I just was informed by the superintendent a few moments ago.
Was you?
Yeah, I was informed, and I informed the people who were there.
And then there's-
Two board members just came in, they are not aware of it, but-
Okay, and there's more complaints coming in because I have more parents calling about that with the issues, which I informed you guys last month about that. So I have three or four more parents calling in, more complaints with what happened last month. So parents are going to start making some complaints too with what happened. Because we never really resolved that last month.
I thought it was resolved.
No, no, it was never resolved. How we resolved that was, you guys put a person with some cones and started blocking people.
Could you come up here and sit?
Oh, okay. As I say, how it was resolved was, basically, somebody decided to put a cone monitor instead of monitoring children. They decided to put a cone monitor and block people off.
Can I stop again? What's a cone monitor?
A cone monitor is a person who blocks off the road to drop people off in the morning. So there's basically a person out there who blocks off the road with cones.
So there is a person out there though?
Yes, but a person, I mean-
I don't know, I want to learn.
Well, we call them a cone monitor because all she does is stand there and block the cones and block the road off where you can't really drop off your kids. So we call her a cone monitor.
You being the parents?
No.
Yeah, the parents and the daycares.
Okay.
So we call her a cone monitor. So there's not really anybody out there supervising, it's just basically somebody supervising the cones. So, we just call them a cone monitor.
And then you said something about the Board of Education call?
Yeah, we called the Board of Education because basically it wasn't resolved with like the kids fighting and all that. And there is an anti-bullying policy because I talked to the Board of Education about that, so there is-
This is the Board of Education.
This, we are in the Board.
Well, there's one in Springfield you can report to when it doesn't get resolved here, which you guys didn't resolve it here. So I went to Springfield and talked to them.
We didn't know that, I mean Springfield, that's where you were asking.
Yeah, yeah, I was asking them for help because I think you helped here. So, and I called the superintendent Gary and told him about, you know, I talked to you guys, you guys never really resolved it. So your ideal resolving it was putting somebody there with cones where we can't drop off kids, that's not really helping us. We have daycares, we have other schools to drop off. What's the point of putting somebody out there if we can't drop our kids off at school?
So I called you after the last board meeting and we-
You put somebody out there with cones where we can't drop our kids off, so how is that helping? How is that helping, Scott? We can't drop our kids off.
I mean, it's not really my time to talk, so-
No, go ahead, go ahead, I just-
No, I mean, but we talked and I let you know when supervision was starting.
Okay.
Which is eight o'clock.
How are we supposed to drop kids off at school though?
Right, so, again, but you said no, last time you said no one talked to you and that nothing was involved, that we didn't talk to you.
But none of the other schools are doing that though.
Okay, that's not true though.
Other kids, I see Broad Meadow and other schools you're able to drop kids off, they're not blocking the roads off with cones.
So you've still been dropping off, actually?
Yeah, I have, but other schools-
You're dropping off when you want to.
Yeah, I dropped them off, and then I have a parent that tried to drop some kids off and the school called the police on her for dropping kids off. She pulled into the driveway and you called the police on her.
She drove down the sidewalk, yes?
She never told me anything about that, and then I got the police called on me and I never drove down my sidewalk. So, why would they call the police on me? I never drove down the sidewalk or tried to-
It might help me, what is it specifically you want?
I don't want the kids monitored so I don't have to go up there and take sticks away from them. At like seven fifty-five, seven fifty, seven fifty-five, can you do that? That's all I've asked you for. And you're acting like it's impossible. You sent somebody out there to babysit some cones. Because obviously you guys don't care about the kids.
Man, please, don't be there.
It's not, it's really not fair to say that. It absolutely is not.
I've been for two months in here, asking for-
I've been here for a year and a half. You cannot say that we don't care about the kids. That's offensive.
How is it offensive when you send somebody out there?
Because you're telling us that we don't care about the kids. When we're there, this is a voluntary job.
Okay.
And we volunteer our time and our effort.
Then why are the kids still-
We go in and we're talking to, because we can't resolve every single issue right off the bat, man. But to say, and say that we don't care about the kids is very offensive. It is very offensive to me.
Well, I'm sorry, it's just really offensive to pull up and see kids getting hurt.
It is, I, no one likes to say that. No one likes to say that.
How would you feel if you pulled up and you're saying, okay, I can't send somebody to watch the kids, but you can send somebody out to watch some cones? That's a joke. How would you feel?
I have to tell you what you're saying.
Would you send your child to that school, honestly?
I would send my child to any school in the rental city school district.
Does your kid go to Eastland?
No, he does not, because we don't live in that neighborhood.
No, maybe you're tying this up and duly noted, and I believe-
I'm just saying though, just expect more calls because the parents are getting frustrated, I'm getting frustrated, everybody's getting frustrated to see this. And I'm just asking, put somebody out there, because the cone lady, she didn't even say anything when they're running around with sticks today. Why do I have to get out of my car? I didn't even look for all the sticks, but I took the obvious way.
Did the school call you back today?
No, I didn't even call them. I just walked over and I said, guys-
They were supposed to call you, came out.
I said very nicely, I said very nicely, can I have your sticks? And then I was called a lot of-
Ms. Fesselli, we received multiple parent complaints about you today.
I don't care. I asked them, can I have their sticks? There's two adults out there and they didn't even say anything to them about them running with sticks.
Okay, I think we've got what you want. Your message, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Golson?
You're up, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, only a little, but it means a lot. Mr. Wood? See if you can get someone out there, seven fifty, please. The cones, they're necessary. People know, come up, you gotta obey the laws. As far as driving down the sidewalk, I've looked into that too, and it didn't happen. That was a frustrating, frustrating person, who's saying, but didn't happen. If I drove down the sidewalk, didn't happen. Community, community, board, educators, this is pot. We all got to stir with the same stick. We got to do it together. So all about the children, it's all about the building's a random tool. Let's just work this together. This is an easy workout. We talked after the last board meeting. Hopefully, what we were able to talk about, we can get implemented in the future, coming up. But I don't like seeing the same thing trying to be rehashed. Especially when it gets to be tit for tat. I don't want you on there, let's put out cones, you know? And mind you, we all know about the privacy, you know, if you're taking pictures of privacy, but you know, you've got to get to a point where people are seeing that there is some progress. And to be honest with you, I don't think the cones were a good idea. I know all of you do the best you can with what you do, but in this situation, the cones are not a good idea to have up there. Especially after the meeting that we had just had. It doesn't seem like that was a resolution, it seemed like that was a get back. It shouldn't have been. So, let's just move forward. If the school was supposed to call her, Mr. Wood, perhaps instead of the school calling her now, since she's already forced that, would you and Ms. Fesselli have a conversation? So it's not the school now calling, it's you and Ms. Fesselli calling, so we can get a resolution to this. We don't want to drag this over into 2023. That's not necessary. Let's just go ahead and get this right. If you can do seven fifty, have someone out there, that's good. We just need someone there with the children so that we're not back here every month about the same. And if you could do that, that'd help a heck of a lot. As far as the other schools are concerned, it's still one thirty-seven. So we're not looking at, no, have you been any different from Eastland? From Broad Meadow? Ada, it's still one thirty-seven. Let's just get this done. We can do this.
Thank you.
Moving to number four, which is consent agenda items.
All right, the regular items are in here. One thing I would note is there is a board policy change. We need to update the name of our Title IX coordinator in the board policies. It's the only place where individuals are named. We did it, the board approved it as part of the staff handbook and the student handbook, but it was not done in the board policy. So note that I will be doing that in the summer in the future. So, there's also an MOU with RCVSPA. The new buildings and grounds position is part of the association, that's the intent of the MOU, which is part of the union. And we are contracting with a third party to clean here at Central Office so that that's no longer a responsibility for our custodians. And the custodial association agrees with doing that. They, what we're trying to be careful of is they don't want that to be expanded, to be more positions, and that's not the intent. It's really just about cleaning here at Central Office. There's also a contract for vision impaired services, which is a certified teaching position. They're fairly hard to come by, and we have not filled that position in about four or five years, right? So this person will be doing just as needed services for us through a third party provider.
Okay. Would I like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items, including personal report as submitted, with the stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements for new hires as indicated in Illinois statute and RCS board policy and procedures, including ratification of bills prepaid by the finance manager under board policy for fifty.
I'll say in a minute. Seconded, so?
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Diana Mendoza?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Joe Robinson?
Aye. Aye.
Tyler, I'd like to hire you, such a good job.
There's a lot of motions to read.
Okay, so, and we're going to move on to number eight? Is that right? Or my seven?
Six.
Six, six. Presentation, I couldn't find it in there. Presentation of board member, presentation by Broad Meadow, excuse me.
So there, they are, come on up, Amy Blomberg and Stephen?
Yes.
If you would, board members, they're in your package, this is the whole presentation tonight, but since there's going to be three separate topics presented, I wanted you to have the slides in front of you so you can follow along a little bit. So you might want to flip ahead to Amy and Deb. Well, which one's Amy?
I'm Amy.
All right, and Deb?
I'm Deb.
All right, I think most of you know, so, all right, well, I'm going to be quiet now.
But I just want to thank you guys again for giving us an opportunity to share some of our progress toward our goal, as well as celebrate some of the great things that are going on at Broad Meadow. We want to just have you guys take a minute to read the Broad Meadow Equity Vision Statement that the staff has created. Really committed to giving our kids meaningful learning experiences, and so I'm going to give you a moment to read this. So our school improvement goals fall under three categories, so we're going to go over them tonight with you and our progress that we've made. Our first goal targets academics, our second goal, social motion and learning in the school climate, and then our third goal is centered around family engagement. And we will talk about our goals and our progress toward each one of them. So our first goal is academic goals and progress, and I just want to give you some context, go along with the slides. So as we look at our data, we look at where they're performing, and we color code it for a visual representation of where they are. So red would be that they were performing below where they needed to be. Yellow would be they were approaching, green would be they were at, and blue would be they would be exceeding where they would want to be. So I kind of think of it as like a stoplight for myself, like red, we need to stop and think about, is what we're doing working? Or do we need to tweak it? And so our goal in the school is to have more green and blue and less red. And this is just an example of one grade level, but we do this for every grade level, so I just used kindergarten four. So our kindergarten academic goal is that ninety percent of our kindergarten students will know their letters and sounds by May of 2023. And as you see in the beginning of the year, we had twelve percent at grade level, and already by October, we have fifty percent, which is huge. And so that's a huge turnaround. We are really confident that we are going to continue to see these huge gains in kindergarten. We also have a goal for math.
On the next slide?
Next slide. Same thing, we've seen huge gains already. Ninety percent of our students will be able to identify numbers one through twenty and rope count to one hundred. And again, the beginning of the year, we had thirty percent, and in October, it's sixty-four percent. So as you can see, we're doing a really great job meeting those goals.
Now, one thing, I told you I was going to ask you this.
Yes.
This, this one is here on both slides. There's one kid in red on K rope count one hundred, there's one kid in red still for letter sounds and IDs. So what do we do for that student?
So what we do is we really try to look at our data, and we look down the numbers. So we really dig into it and say, what skills are they meeting and what skills do they need? And then we provide them with extra support through tutoring, or we have an interventionist for both reading and math that that student, as well as the teachers can provide extra support in those areas too. So as you can see, this is, again, this is Fastbridge data, and this is trend from twenty. I looked at our fall 2021 for our fall 22, and again, that same trend, we are increasing our greens and decreasing reds in reading. Again, same thing happens in math, we're increasing our greens and decreasing reds. And we really are looking to at like the grade levels, these are giving us opportunities to problem solve of like things that we need to do differently in our instruction and our programming and our building, or the grade levels that aren't where we need them to be. So this is the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, our third through fifth grade students take once a year. And again, just wanted to show the overall trend again. You can see that, I'm going to have my glasses on for this. The number significantly decreases from twenty-one to twenty-two on, and this is for ELA.
What number decreased?
The red, which I can't see. Sixty-six percent to fifty-two percent. That's far away and little. So again, same trend in math. In fact, it went from seventy to fifty-two percent. And then one other way that we look at students, we look to make sure that they're making a projected growth. So we look at whether they have higher than expected growth, would be blue, and expected green, lower than expected would be yellow, and then unsatisfied would be red. Again, we want kids in the green and the blue. So I'm just going to show you an example of first grade right now, reading data. And as you can see, the green and the blue, the trend continues, and we're even making accelerated growth. And we are seeing that almost all of our students are making it.
So, we have our second goal is focused on social and emotional learning and school climate because we know that it's not just about academics, and it's, and our scores reflect not only their ability to take a test, but what they're doing in the classroom and how they're reacting to, you know, difficult situations and maybe something that they don't want to do. You know, so we have some goals for teachers specifically. Our goal targets equity by linking trauma, racism, and equity in school, in our school, and provides professional development to improve staff understanding of the impact of the students' school experiences. So we decided as a team of people that we wanted to provide classroom management plans that align with conscious discipline. And you can see on this that we have completed a lot of different things and other things are in progress. Our staff has participated in psychological first aid training, and we are making moves, if you will, for providing movement and self-care at Broad Meadow.
Oh, here's the movement.
There's a movement, okay, so because we look at trauma and we look at our social emotional learning, we know that movement is something that is very important for our students. So you can see that on the left-hand side, we have a movement room. And then we also have, on the right-hand side, we have a sensory path inside and outside. We just got the new outside sensory paths all along our sidewalks outside by the playground. We have the, the trauma-informed spaces, if you will, like for our staff and our parents, some of the self-care spaces, because what Amy always says, it's like, if you say, provide yourself with self-care, well, that's just another thing on your to-do list. So we're trying to provide some of those spaces for not only the staff, but also the parents. So, looking at SABERS. SABERS is our social, academic, and emotional risk behavior screener that we do through Fastbridge. The district does it as a whole, and Broad Meadow is, if you look at the comparison, Broad Meadow is pretty much right where the rest of the district is as far as our at-risk. So our students have social and academic and emotional behavior risk. But we don't want to, we don't want to look at that as just a concern. We want to look at that as an opportunity so that we can provide supports and services for our kids and for the parents so that they know that we care about what the kids are doing and how their behavior or their at-risk may affect their actual academics.
So what this is showing, board members, is at Broad Meadow and like in the rest of the district, on this assessment that is intended to screen for academic, emotional, and behavior risks, that about thirty percent to thirty-two percent of our kids are falling in that at-risk group. The high-risk group is not huge, right, but it's- But it's uh, a lot of that, let's see, it looks like about thirty percent is some risk with two percent higher risk.
And I also wanna make mention that um, when this, this is um, the teacher's SABERS scores, that's not, we also have the students do their own SABERS scores. I didn't include those because obviously students are, you know, it's more subjective when you include both of those. So uh, the programs and supports that we provide um, based on our feelings that, okay, we might have some at-risk, we might need to put some more supports in place so that the students can feel confident and competent in their abilities. So we have morning meetings with SEL. We provide parent support. We do the, not only the parent mentors, but we, we call, I call parents. I got some parents on speed dial. But um, but I have conferences. I, it's pretty much Amy and I both do it, but I, I have a lot of parent contacts because I've been at Broadmeadow, this would be my fifth year. So I, I know a lot of the parents. We have a behavior interventionist that pushes in and observes and she provides not only supports for the kids, but um, interventions for the um, teachers. We have our instructional coach who supports in the classroom and we do different initiatives like anti-bullying and kindness.
So our family engagement goals um, are to give our parents opportunities to come on and provide us with feedback, like so that we had, know what their needs, wants are. And we had a goal that we would provide this opportunity at least four or times a year. And we have exceeded that. We provide almost monthly, I think, activities everywhere, from NAPED to Spring, Spring Literacy United to Sisters in St. We're providing free photos this weekend for families to come get um, holiday pictures if they want. Um, and they get free prints. So again, this, we've exceeded this goal and we've just seen a huge influx of families into Broadmeadow. We've also established our parent advisory council, met three times a year. And we have partnered with Dream, which is an amazing partner for us. And they um, are not only providing healthcare for our families, they have five parent mentors in our building currently working. So that's been amazing. So we're doing great. And as you can see from the next slide, this is just some, you can see the packed house. You know, that is the family engagement and it's just increased every year. We also do full pre-school swipe shopping every year for all of our school students get free school. So um, this is just kind of a highlight that we wanted to share with the board tonight. We are, um, we partnered with the REACH team, which is the resilience and education to advance community healing. It's really being about more trauma-informed within our buildings um, and having those spaces and that education for the teachers. And we started our work with this team of people and um, it was with eighty schools in Illinois. And we did a needs assessment on our building and we found that we really scored low. And again, like Deb said, we didn't look at as probably maybe an opportunity and we're in the midst of COVID and we just really were dedicated and passionate about pushing through this and doing it anyways and finding the time and making it a priority. And we were really quickly recognized for our work. So um, the superintendent, the senator and uh, the state superintendent of education recognized our work and asked us to speak on a panel and we were so good at eighty schools to do that. So that was a huge honor for us. And we are, continue to be recognized for our work and the regional office of education has funded some of these spaces for us. Um, and so this is just kind of a highlight and there's a blurb if you wanna watch it later. Then just give a shout out to Broadmeadow and our REACH team because it's been a huge team of people that has supported the work at our building. Um, and those goals center. Is that my phone?
No, no, no. Right on bottom. You're more important, so go ahead.
So uh, basically, uh, our REACH action plan found that we needed to provide more trauma-informed professional development for our teachers. So we started that like Deb mentioned in that other slide. It also found that our students, again, the trauma's impacting their brain and the brain has toxins in it and they might not be ready to learn. And so we are providing movement and trauma-informed practice so we prevent re-traumatizing them. Um, and then we found that we're getting compassion fatigue because we are going through these traumatic experiences and our families are going through these traumatic experiences. So we want self-care spots for parents, students and families and staff. And uh, we can't do this work alone. Again, the district has been great by giving us job prevention, job invented professional development during the day. We've had a lot of great partners that have made all of this progress possible. And a shout out to Susan Hent, who's been in our building with our co-teaching model. She's been giving us feedback and in the classrooms um, and really grown our capacity as well to lead this work in the building. Um, and then our business partners, you know, our community is really rallied around us. We get spoiled by a lot of different people in the community. The First Baptist Church just dropped off our fall treats. They hosted our dinners. Um, Dream is huge for our kids. They provide our after-school experiences and all of our summer experiences and fund lots of things within our building. The Villas of Holleyburg, we walked down to them. And again, you can see that we, that picture, that was just doing Halloween thing. And you know, I think it's a win-win there. The residents love us and we love the residents. Um, and then we also had a career there, where seventeen mentor guests joined us so that our students could see themselves in these different careers.
How did Monica Hall do?
Who?
Sure she was horrible.
That's Nikki's sister. All right.
Wow.
Um, and so again, we couldn't have done this without our staff. So as Deb and I sit here, we just want to give a shout out to our staff, Broadmeadow staff, because these are the people that every single person in that picture is a part of this plan and makes this learning possible. Um, and it really takes all of us. And if you walk into our building and you've ever been there, you will see it firsthand. You see people loving and hugging on kids all day long and you see them pushing kids to be their best and learn at their highest level. And so we wanna give a shout out to our staff and wanna thank you guys for letting us present.
Hopefully.
And oh, last, we're gonna end with, this is the cutest. So this is our commitment and we start our day with the pledge and then this affirmation pledge is called the Broadmeadow Bobcat Pledge. So every day we say this pledge.
Wait, there's no sound. I'll tell you. Look at her, you, we were practicing this. Here we go.
Go Bobcats!
I am somebody liking.
I am somebody.
I am somebody liking.
I will be a better somebody when I leave.
I am powerful.
And I am strong.
I deserve your education and I get you.
And things to do.
People to impress.
And places to go.
Go Bobcats!
Thank you, thank you.
I am somebody.
I will be a better somebody when I leave.
I am powerful and I am strong.
And we invite you guys to come in anytime and really just see this firsthand. We feel like we have a lot of amazing people.
I just can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all that you've done.
I'm really glad that.
I know. And uh, thank you.
And now to something completely not very exciting.
Uh, number seven.
Tyler's up.
Abatement resolution.
So I'll explain real quick what it is. RCS has three outstanding bonds that we pay with the one percent sales tax revenue annually. The board must approve a resolution abating the property tax collection that would otherwise be required to pay the bonds. So um, we do not collect property taxes to pay our bonds because we are able to pay them with one percent sales tax. So we have to read all three resolutions one at a time and take a vote on each one. So whoever does it, you say, I'd like to motion to approve the resolution abating the, you have to read the whole. Yeah.
Tyler, you up for it?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution abating the tax heretofore levy for the year twenty twenty-two to pay debt service on taxable general obligation bonds. Alternate revenue source, series two thousand ten B, qualified zone academy bonds of the district.
And I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Brotherton.
Aye.
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
Diana Mendoza.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Do the second one?
Oh.
Go, let's go to the second.
Resolution abating the tax heretofore levy for the year twenty twenty-two to pay debt service and taxable general obligation school boards. Alternate revenue source, series.
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen qualified school construction bonds of the district.
And I'll second it again.
Mr. Brotherton.
You're making me feel old.
I'm sorry, John Brotherton.
Aye.
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
Diana Mendoza.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Okay. So I do the last one. I'll make the motion to resolution abating the tax heretofore levy by, for the school year twenty twenty-two to pay debt service on general obligation refunding school bonds. Alternate revenue source, series two thousand twenty of the district.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All right, John Brotherton.
Aye.
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
Diana Mendoza.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Let me go to number eight. Okay, update twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four calendar. Oh, gotta have that.
All right, as part of our efforts to strengthen and improve the transition into kindergarten, the administration is recommending the following changes. It doesn't change the school year at all, it's just the start of the school year for kindergartners. So August sixteenth would be only kindergarten for students' last names A through L. I got it right. August seventeenth would only be kindergarten students' last name M through Z and on August eighteenth, all of the kindergarten students would start. Uh, school days would remain the same for pre-K and one through eight.
Explain why you do this.
Sure. And so we, uh, Ms. Ferricks reminded me that we did this in two thousand nineteen and then that we stopped doing it um, uh, at the start of the next school year. Something might have been happening in the world at the start of that next school year. So uh, the reason is it brings in, you're, you'll bring in half the kindergarten kids. It allows the teachers to um, bring those kids in a little calmer and quieter. Oftentimes, they're able to have parents and families come in to start on that day. Uh, it just, it makes it a little quieter and easier for the kindergarten teachers to do that. And it's pretty common. Uh, the other item down here is, um, this may actually come up next month. We might have to vote on the calendar again. So what, uh, one of the things that's happening in discussions uh, with uh, the district leadership team and with our teachers association is instead of having, I think we have eight half-days right now, we are looking into applying for a waiver to have five full days as school improvement planning days. Those count towards our one hundred and eighty school days still, but they would not be where your student comes to school for half the day and then goes home. So we would have, instead of eight half-days, we're looking at up to five full days if we're able to do the waiver. And that's for professional development. So we find that the half-days right now aren't probably as productive as they could be because we only have two hours with our staff by the time kids are gone and we've had lunch. And a less than two hours often by the time we're able to do things. And frankly, they're all on Friday afternoons right now and um, folks tend to be tired. So we're hoping, well, we're just, we'll talk about it more when we end of year. But right now, you're only voting to change the kindergarten piece because we do know we wanna do that.
One, I hope so.
One, thank you. Second?
I second you. I second.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
Diana Mendoza.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you. Number nine, action substitute teacher compensation.
All right. It feels like an arms race in this area right now, but um, a larger nearby district south of us, downtown Spur. In just, just in, just in, nah, I haven't. Just increase their daily sub and long-term sub and permanent subs, uh, all of their pay rates. Bringing them ahead of us and the concern is, is that we um, are trying to get the same folks often. So um, we need to pay our subs more. The, uh, Hannah can answer any questions you have about folks. She is also the subs secretary for the district. On the retired teacher daily rate, I guess it's of note is we don't currently have any retired teachers subbing daily that get that rate. So um, we would love to have retired teachers subbing. I don't think we can pay. So uh, the folks that earn two twenty-five, just for your reference, those are the people who are uh, full-time in a classroom as a regular teacher. So sometimes it's maternity leave or family leave and sometimes it's because we have been unable to fill that position. So. Any questions?
Yes. That's enough, at two twenty-five?
Yeah, those are the people who are, they are, you, most, most folks wouldn't see them any differently than a regular classroom teacher because they are in the classroom, teaching every day, lesson planning, making parent contacts. They just don't have the full license shirt uh, that a regular teacher would have. Folks who come in and just cover because a teacher's sick, they're at that one sixty. They were, what I'm proposing is the one sixty-six rate.
I'll make the motion to approve the item as presented.
John Brotherton.
Aye.
Katie Johnston.
Aye.
Diana Mendoza.
Aye.
Nikki Pettit.
Aye.
Joe Robinson.
Aye.
Tyler Wilson.
Aye.
Number ten, school report card data.
All right, everyone. Hannah's supposed to kick me when I start talking too long. But you're way over there.
I'll do it for you.
All right. Okay, so we did send out a letter on October thirtieth about our school report cards. Those are released on the thirtieth. We had access to that data, I would say, for about a month before. Um, and we're already working with that, building our school improvement plan. So the ten-thousand-foot view, what's going on? As a district, RCS improved in all four content areas that are measured, which are math, English language arts and science. So that's really a big deal. The, um, so when we're really up high, we're seeing improvement in all of our areas. The one-thousand-foot view is that each one of our schools is given a designation. And right now, those designations are pre-K and Lori shared that with you when she presented. It's rated gold. They're the only ones eligible to be rated gold. Commendable is for our Broadmeadow East Lawn and North View. Um, and one thing we wanna note is that when this rating uh, system started, East Lawn started off as comprehensive, which was the lowest rating and have been able to move into commendable. Pleasant Acres this year is at targeted and JW Ater is at comprehensive. And so what does that mean on the ground? So Pleasant Acres as targeted. And so I remember four years ago, five years ago, when this first came out, we spent like an hour explaining how these summative designations were determined. So if you really wanna know. Yes, yeah, I don't know, I got an hour. We, I'll, you can let me know and I can go through and explain it to you. It, it's complicated, but what it comes down to is, did all of your student groups make progress on the way it's measured? So now, instead of just looking at proficiency on one test, they are looking at things like how much did that student group grow? So how much did they improve? So you could have a low uh, performing student group and they might be low, but maybe they really improved over where they were last year. So that does count for something and that's the growth score. So the main area for Pleasant Acres and why they are identified as targeted is their low-income student group um, fell uh, below where, what it should be. And that is uh, interesting to, it's, that's a interesting one because they are over ninety percent low income. So it, it really is their whole school. What does it mean for Pleasant Acres? What does it mean for Pleasant Acres? They will receive some additional school improvement grant funding. When we dug into their data, though, it really came down to attendance rates is probably what kept them in the targeted instead of moving into commendable. JW Ader is now in comprehensive, and they are in comprehensive for three student category, student groups, students with disabilities, and that includes students who have IEPs and five oh four plans. And five oh four plans often are not related anything to academics, but that's grouped together. English language learners, which is mostly for us and Rantoul, our students in the bilingual program, and African-American students. So since these summative designations came about.
What is that, why?
Why?
Why are African-American students?
So all of those groups are there because they're having a combination of low overall proficiency. So proficiency means passing score on the test. So we have a low overall passing score. A combination of low passing score, probably low growth, and it can also, a big piece of it is attendance. And I'm going to talk about attendance.
Is that also for the English language learners?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'll say it on, I think it's on the next slide. So let me explain what it means, though. So Ader is comprehensive, they are going to receive fifteen thousand dollars for school improvement planning this year, and then it's a hundred thousand dollars for implementation next year. They get resources from a group through ISB, which is called Illinois Empower Providers. And so it's interesting, for several years, Broadmeadow's actually been working with one of those Illinois Empower Providers, as well as the other elementary schools, and have really been able to show some growth in language arts. And then we also have a consultant from the state board who works with us. And I think, I did not say it, so going, it's at the end. So what I can say and what I want to acknowledge, why is this happening with these student groups? Overall, our student test scores are low in proficiency. Okay? There's not an easy way to slice it and say that we are happy in any way whatsoever with the low percentage of students who are meeting proficiency on the test. That's the number one thing we have to fix, and we know that. But the way the scores are put in, attendance has a disproportionate value in it, and we were walloped last year on attendance. This COVID thing was happening. Okay? So daily attendance rates, so this will show you the trend from the school report card. Typically, we're between ninety-three and ninety-four percent of our students are in attendance every day. Okay? And that kind of makes sense, right? It's in a class of twenty, you're going to have one or two kids out, is what it is. During twenty twenty, our attendance rates went up. Why? We weren't taking attendance the last third of the school year. Neither was any school in the state of Illinois at that point. Last year, it dropped a lot, and then it did start to improve. So this is the year where we were never in person full-time for all kids. And then last year, we were in person for all kids, but we still were closing down, and we still had COVID-related absences. So this average daily attendance rate is not as concerning to me when you see that, but it's the chronic absenteeism rate. All right. Chronic, and a student who is chronically absent is a student who misses at least ten percent of the school year for any reason. So when a child, so that's seventeen days, seventeen or eighteen days, I don't know the exact, whether, it's a hundred and eighty school days, but kids only attend a hundred and seventy-four. Any child basically who was quarantined is out for ten days last year. So what was happening, and we've really done a lot of analysis on this, what was happening is when we looked at other districts with similar demographics to us, so schools in Champaign and in Urbana, Rantoul High School, that the attendance, the chronic absenteeism rates were much higher than more affluent communities. And so what we think is happening, what's happening is, we were quarantining kids because we were required to, but then we had a lot of students who were not doing any remote learnings when they were out. If a student didn't do remote learning, they were absent. And that's what we were finding, we were experiencing it all through last year, too, but we, kids would just go home and not do anything. They weren't logging on their Chromebooks, they weren't turning things in. So we're finding that pattern is, is consistent with the students that we have. We know right now, we are on, so what this tells you is, we are almost at fifty percent of our kids last year missed more than ten percent of school year, is what that means. I'm pointing at my screen like you can see. All right. So as a result of that, we, so Ader was actually over fifty percent of its students who were chronically absent last year. Because of that, they got zero points in determining their summative designation rating for attendance. Twenty of a hundred points are for attendance, they got zero. In a typical year, they were getting at least five points. If they'd gotten those five attendance points, they would not be in the comprehensive group. So it's a, it's a metric, we know at half the attendance matters. It seems to be punishing school districts disproportionately related to COVID. So because our kids weren't participating at a high enough rate in online learning is why our chronic absenteeism rate is so high. We have checked numbers comparing, Darcy Wydenhurst, our student information systems person, compared the school year last year through November ninth and the school year this year through November ninth, and we have about half as many kids right now chronically absent. So we're, that number is just in half, probably because we're in person full-time. So this really got me digging into attendance. So chronic absenteeism had a significant negative effect on the summative designations for Pleasant Acres and Ader. Of the possible twenty points on the summative designation, Pleasant Acres received point four or five, Ader received zero. Comparison is Broadmeadow got six point four, Eastlon five point one four, and Northview one point three six. Pleasant Acres is our highest low-income school, and JW Ader would be second on that. Now, in your board packet is the school district's attendance improvement program. What it, what an attendance improvement program means is, this is how we're monitoring students who may be chronically absent, and then the process of referring them to the board, the regional office of education. That's a difficult thing because you really, changing, getting kids to school is a hard thing to do because we cannot control whether a student attends school. That all happens at home. So one thing, and I'm throwing the question out there, we don't have to discuss it right now, but you may if you want, is my leadership team, we were discussing whether the district should develop a policy tying attendance to retention or promotion. It is such a significant issue. We have a student right now at the junior high with thirty-three absences already. Okay? Now, it's possible that student's not going to pass just because that student can't keep up. But we don't seem to have, we're looking to think of ways that we can make sure our students and our families know that they have to go to school. Okay? And we're not talking about going to school when you're sick. That's not what we're talking about. So there are districts that do things like policies tying attendance. It used to be fairly common at high schools where if you missed ten percent of the course, you were going to get credit for it. So that type of thing. So that's, so I just threw that out there. In summary, prior to COVID, RCS performance metrics were improving, and like all districts, we saw a significant learning loss during and after COVID. As a district, our, a district, our scores in all three content areas improved and improved at a rate higher than the state improved. Our students are making growth, but we need to see significantly more growth. And again, this, this is the big one, I want to make sure you hear from me, is no one is satisfied with our low level of student proficiency on this test. The good news is that with this accountability comes support from ISBE, targeted support for Pleasant Acres and JW Ader. And in the coming months, I will present the district annual report that will provide significantly more context on a lot of other things that are in the school report card, like finances and teacher retention and things like that. That will be in the annual report that I do. So that's the summary for the school report. So questions? Answers?
So you said the chronic, the chronic absentee student is anything?
Any type of absence.
So?
Given an absence in three days.
Right, and overall?
If they're at, yeah, if they're a total of.
So it's, it's an add-up time? Okay, so like they were out for ten days with COVID, or, and then they had a death in the family or a car accident or something that they could make it, then that put them possibly over to the seventeen.
I mean, if they were.
Okay, all right.
It doesn't matter if it's excused or unexcused. Okay. So they put on the report card, they put two numbers, they put chronic absentee and chronic truant. Well, it used to be it was chronic truant that the state wanted us to focus on because those are kids not showing up to school, and there's no excuse. So their parent never calls them in. We don't even know why. Now they're shifted to an absence is an absence. The only ones that wouldn't count, my understanding is if you're home hospitalized, so you've got a, I mean, that's a handful of kids every year, that they're hospitalized and we're providing at-home services, or the hospital's providing services to them. But yeah, I mean, if your kid's sick, it counts against chronic absenteeism. I think most parents would be shocked to learn that their kids were chronically absent.
Yeah.
So. So it's just a, it's a challenging metric. It just doesn't. My finished sentence.
So then, do we help that in any way by providing Chromebooks for them to do their work outside when they're safe or anything like that?
So during, we don't have that anymore. That was during COVID, so.
Right.
So we were, though, yeah, we provided at-home internet and Chromebooks.
Do we have a method in place? Because now we know that we are able to do that. So do we have any type of policy in place?
It wouldn't count.
Why?
Because it was, those rules were only in effect for COVID.
That's what you're asking? It is, but I'm asking why? If we're, if we have this problem?
Yeah. Well, that's the state that creates the rules for what counts on attendance.
So you're saying?
So we could, we could, like, your, your child's homesick for a week, right? And not specifically your child.
Right.
And, and we send homework, and you do the work with your child, because that's, should that, under COVID, that, and if you return the work, that wasn't counted as an absence. But in a regular school year, it's an absence no matter what. You just, you can make up the work, but it's still an absence from school.
That's because the state's saying that.
Is there any way for us to change, to help try to change the law?
Well, when you're up at a triple I conference, then that is some conversation about it. I'm not sure if it's on the radar of other districts, but, you know, ultimately, if our proficiency scores were higher, we wouldn't have to worry about attendance. Okay? But the low attendance is also what contributes to the low proficiency scores.
Right.
And, yeah, but I mean, overall, though, the thing, again, to focus on, our kids did improve in proficiency. But yeah, I was really, when we, when I finally got in to see the detailed numbers of how Ader was calculated, and I saw that we got zero points for attendance, I, I may have gotten red in the face. All right.
Comments?
That was only five minutes, right?
Yeah. Thinking that, okay? Number eleven, student behavior and discipline. That's what you're saying on our.
Yes, and I did cut out some of the slides, so the board and the, it'll be in the public documents, have all the slides, but I had, I didn't. Let's get going, all right. All of student discipline is governed by policy, and so we have board policy. Those board policies are repeated in the student and family parent handbooks. And what I can say, and I, I did a lot of this presentation with you last year, is in two thousand fifteen, a bill that's referred to now as Senate Bill one hundred was passed, and that significantly changed school districts' board policies. So we had to, at that time, the board would have had to change a lot of the language related to student discipline. And we'll go through what some of that is. So SB one hundred, when it was passed, is intended to reduce or eliminate exclusionary discipline consequences. Those are out-of-school suspensions, transfers to alternative schools, or expulsions. School districts were required to eliminate zero tolerance policies related to discipline other than those related to possession of a firearm or weapon. So when people say things like, we have a zero tolerance policy on bullying, we technically don't because we're not allowed to have a zero tolerance policy legally. And what the reason for that change likely was because school districts were doing things, I worked in a school district that had this rule. Anyone who threw anything in the cafeteria was automatically suspended for two days. Right, so that's a zero tolerance policy. You could be tossing a napkin to your neighbor, and you would get suspended for two days. And that goes on to say eliminated standard or stock disciplinary consequences for offenses. For instance, if there's a fight, the school districts might have, used to say, it's an automatic five-day suspension. We're not even going to question it. You know, a fight's a fight, it's five days. Now, school districts, including RCS, are not allowed to just have a flat response to a disciplinary action. We are required to consider students' individual circumstances before imposing a behavioral or disciplinary consequence. And this is when the real push for things like restorative justice and interventions started as alternatives to traditional consequences. We have to, when we suspend a student, we have to consider if the student's continued presence in school will cause a significant safety concern for the likelihood of disruption to the school environment. So what Senate Bill one hundred changed drastically, I remember this, is when I was first a principal, we expelled kids for drug possession. Okay? Senate Bill hundred, one hundred comes in, and drug possession, is it causing a significant safety concern at the school? So the way the law was interpreted was drug possession now goes into a fairly minor category, where it used to be an expellable offense. We are required to provide supportive services to students serving suspensions of more than four days. And we have to implement supports to help the students successfully return to the school setting. So this is when schools started doing re-entry conferences with all parents, or scheduling them at least, when a student returned from a suspension. Some other things that came in with the law is when a child was suspended from school, they must have an opportunity to make up the work for equivalent academic credit. Prior to Senate Bill one hundred, it was common that you're suspended, you get a zero on everything, and you failed for those days. It changed bus suspensions. So if we suspend a student from the bus, and now that child cannot get to school because of that, so that was fairly common, that misbehavior on bus, the answer was, you don't get to ride the bus. Well, now, if we do that, and then the student can't get to school, it's viewed as an out-of-school suspension, and then all the out-of-school suspension rules kick in. And then the big one that came out of it was the elimination of zero tolerance discipline policies. All right, so here's a diagram. I remember, I remember the first time I was presented with this in two thousand sixteen. And the idea of this thermometer is to say, when. And the idea of this thermometer is to say, when is something expellable or suspendable versus something that is fairly minor? And some things that come in here on this are, where people tend to disagree, are some of these things right in here. Okay, so, um, possessing and being under the influence of drugs, suspension may be appropriate. Bullying and harassment, other consequences may be appropriate. Okay, and now this is not a strict rule, but it was a way of presenting it. Yes, when we had firearms or attacks on students or staff, we were still talking about suspensions and expulsions. So it, um, did change what we did on that. So anything, questions kind of on Senate Bill 100? Before I talk about bullying? I think I, that's, you're in the part where I skipped a bunch of slides. So oftentimes, I will be asked, well, can't you just make a rule that, you know, you'll suspend kits for this automatically? That, this is the laws why we cannot do that. Even though a lot of people exercising common sense may feel otherwise on some of these things. So. Alright, continue. Bullying and aggressive behaviors and sexual harassment. So this is specifically, bullying is specifically covered in Board Policy 7:18. I want to make sure the board's aware that we do have a frequently asked questions document that's on our website, which goes through examples of is this bullying and what should I do if I think my child is being bullied? We have an online reporting form that parents and students and staff will complete them on behalf of students often to report bullying. It can be done anonymously, but we don't encourage anonymous reporting because it is incredibly, it's incredibly difficult to investigate an anonymous report. One thing that is revised recently is this document, which I did put this specific document in the board packet, and that is the investigation and findings process that is used by our administrators. So if there is a complaint of bullying, they're going to go into this document and follow the investigatory process. If there is a report of behavior that may be related to sexual harassment, then we have a, we take a detour from the bullying investigation and we have to consider whether it is a Title IX sexual harassment investigation first, before we would consider it as a bullying investigation. Typically, when there is, um, something that might be viewed as sexual harassment, families don't choose to make a formal complaint and instead allow the school to address it as a behavioral issue, which would be the bullying investigation process. Because the rules for Title IX are very, very cumbersome. They're being revised right now, uh, and so we're, we've been waiting, I would say about a year for new guidelines from the federal government on Title IX investigations. Alright, responses to bullying behavior. So I, these are the, what happens? Each and every reported incident of bullying behavior is fully investigated by a staff member, and appropriate actions are taken, including possible disciplinary actions. Students who demonstrate bullying behavior or are victims of bullying behavior may be offered services through a social worker or may be referred to a community agency for supportive services. And all staff and students receive instruction on bullying prevention through our Conscious Discipline Program in Second Step and FLY 5, which is our new SEL curriculum this year. Staff additionally receive annual bullying prevention training through the district's employee training platform, which I shared with all the board members. I didn't check to see how many of you did the online training. Don't all tell me you did it. But I did share it with you to, so you could see how exciting that online training platform is.
We have until the 30th.
But I would also say, yeah, you did, October 30th is over though.
Oh, I thought it was November 30th.
Oh, November 30th.
Ah, that's what it said.
You also don't have to do it. You're not an employee, so. But I would also throw, throw in, most of our buildings do considerably more with their, uh, teachers and support staff about what to do about bullying. The reality is, is what gets reported as bullying is oftentimes aggressive behavior. It isn't going to rise to the standard of defined as bullying. It's mean behavior. Kids are, kids, you may not know this, kids are often not nice to each other. And they get physical and there's the name calling. Those are all inappropriate behaviors and those are going to be addressed. But bullying behavior has to fit a, a definition, and we'll get into that here in a second.
I want to get into why it has to.
Why it has to what?
Fit a definition.
We can, yeah. Again, this is go through the process, so, um, the, what I want to point out on the investigation part and the, uh, during the investigation phase, the staff member doing the investigation will work to resolve the problem through various measures, including restorative conversations, conflict circles, parent and family meetings, putting procedural safety plans in place, and other non, and other traditional disciplinary measures. So kids might get in trouble and get maybe a student suspended from school, but there's, there are other tools in the toolbox that our building administrators are using. Because we're in the business of teaching children, and, uh, we do have to teach children how to behave appropriately. And so those other things are processes that we would use to do that. The students who are reporting the behavior are oftentimes, uh, are going to get referred to the social worker for support services. For me, that, as a principal, that often looked like making sure there was an adult who would check in with that child. Hey, is everything okay? Is everything done with, you know, is John still making fun of you? Those kinds of things. Alright. We gotta work on our routine a little better. When, when the investigation is concluded fully, the staff member doing the investigation forwards the findings to the assistant superintendent, and if the family requests it, um, they can receive a report on, uh, the bullying investigation. And so we do have a little more flexibility on what we can share with parents on a bullying, uh, investigation and the outcomes of that. So definitions, so bullying is a legal definition. I would say it, it, ultimately, what we're trying to do in our buildings is get the behavior to stop. So whether we define it as bullying or fighting or being mean, our goal is the same, and that's to get the behavior to stop. If we have a case of true bullying where we're not able to get it to stop, then the district does have other options like alternative placement, long-term suspension, expulsion, those kinds of things. Not in grand tool, but I've only gone through an expulsion once where the basis of the expulsion was bullying. And it required a huge amount of evidence to, to make that determination. So what is bullying? Placing the student or students in reasonable fear of harm to the students or students' person or property, so, I should have read the whole thing. Bullying includes cyberbullying. So there's a lot in our board policy about cyberbullying. That's the electronic stuff. And it has to be severe or pervasive. Okay, so that's why one, a kid being mean to another kid at one time isn't typically going to be viewed as severe and pervasive. And it can reasonably be predicted to have the effect of one or more of the following. So it's number one is placing the student in reasonable fear of harm. Two, causing a substantially detrimental effect on the students or students', students or students', physical or mental health. Substantially interfering with the student's academic performance or interfering with the student's ability to participate in or benefit from the services, activities, or privileges provided by the school. So in the bullying investigation, there's actually a question in there that gets into numbers three and four, right, where have you had to change anything about what you do at school because of this? What's actually changed for you? But ultimately, we want the behavior to stop, whether we define it as bullying or not. Okay, anything on bullying? I don't know that I answered your question. I didn't, right? Alright, so I had these questions last time. What changes do you want to see regarding student discipline policy, if any? You don't have to answer my questions, but these were for discussion. What changes do you want to see regarding the district's bill, districts or buildings' response to student behavior? For in-school suspensions, we have a limited capacity to use this as a consequence, and it doesn't count as an absence, by the way. Would the board be interested in expanding, uh, staffing to allow for larger capacity for in-school suspension type consequences? What alternatives do we have to being suspended out of school? So the nice thing is at the elementary level, we actually have created an alternative, which is the care program, and we are able to use that frequently, uh, so that instead of a child being at home, they are in that classroom for up to three days initially. I remember I, I had, I could have taken this out. Last year, we talked about, um, expellable offenses and whether you wanted all of those brought to the board for consideration, or if you were comfortable with me bringing those to the board after review. The specific question last year was about knives. Um, and the discussion last year was that, or the, the guidance last year was that you were fine with me working with the administrators to determine whether we would bring a knife case to the board for expulsion. So kids bring knives, like I can see the headline tomorrow, superintendent says kids bring knives to school. There often, and it's not often, but it's, uh, when it's a second grader who brings a little Swiss Army knife to school, should we expel that child? So the board would likely say, we'll let you make that decision. And, um, we're going to be able to talk with the child, find out why do they have it. Uh, it's almost always, I didn't even know I had it, right? Because they're little kids. Is there an intent to cause harm? Uh, that's very different from an eighth grader bringing a weapon to school, playing on, fighting someone with it. Right, so, but our policy says that weapons will be brought to the board for expulsion. But it goes on to say that the superintendent, the superintendent has discretion. So it's, it's kind of, you, it's important that, whether you, we talk about it right now or you talk about it with me privately, that you're giving me the guidance on what you want to see happen. Okay? So, other ideas? That was the last question.
Do you know of any districts or any places, like where they? I, I think a lot of our policy now is surrounding like the definition of bullying. Do we have, or is there anywhere like a policy based around aggressive behavior?
No, so our, the aggressive behavior is in that board policy that defines, so there's a separate policy just for bullying. Aggressive behavior is within the laundry list of, which is the first one I'm, I used, I should know it by heart, but there's a whole, there's a listing of all the different offenses that are expellable. And, but it doesn't get into defining aggressive behavior. So by default, that means it's an administrative decision. So we've actually been talking about, I was actually just talking with the junior high staff about that. What they're coding as physical aggression, this is the conversation, we keep coding all of this as physical aggression when it's really just junior high kids horseplaying. Right, so how do we define those differences? And, um, because otherwise, we're looking at it and like, what's with all this fighting? Like, that's how it looks to me on paper. And, um, and anyone who's had a junior high age boy knows that they don't keep their hands to themselves.
I tussle and.
Yep.
All the time. People fight.
One thing, board, I take, bring you up on is, and I'm not prepared to present anything, is the junior high administration is looking at developing a proposal for a, an alternative program for the junior high level. So elementary has CARE right now. They're looking at an alternative program. But I want to be cautious how I say that because we're not talking about an alternative program just for behavior. We're also looking at what are alternative programs for kids that we know can be successful in a non-traditional classroom setting, right? And we learned that in COVID. We had, we had plenty of kids who did perfectly fine remote and online, and they didn't, they don't want to be in the drama of junior high, and so we, we're looking at alternative programs for that. And possibly off campus. Any discussion? It's only 7:20. I have three more presentations tonight.
Where are you going?
The vice president's book. Any, um, also, I know Nikki and Diana, you've gone over and visited the care room this year to see that. So last year, the board, uh, we wanted to be two teachers at least and one TA. We have a teacher, a permanent sub, and a TA right now. Our hiccup this year was, at the beginning of the year, we had a lot of challenges with kindergarten, right? The board, you've all heard this from me in emails, but a lot of challenges with kindergarten, so we are part of why we're looking at half days on those first couple of days. We're also looking at, how do we organize at least one kindergarten classroom in our district a little differently? So that the kids who aren't quite ready for kindergarten have a place to be where, um, it's not, they're not such a disruption to the kids who are ready to be in kindergarten. So we want them to be in kindergarten, but we know they take a little more intense work to actually be ready. I see the teachers over there nodding. And so every year and every kindergarten class, there's like this one kid who's like, how is he doing kindergarten? And, uh, and so that's what ended up happening with CARE this year is we had several kindergartners that we ended up putting there, and that really wasn't the intent of CARE. But that was just right at the beginning of the year. Okay? That's it, I guess. Any other discussion on behavior, bullying? I assume we are all fine with me not bringing every pocket knife for an expulsion. Okay, information items. We had three FOIA's. It was a busy week for me this week, that week, November 4th, 2nd, and 4th. And so we did comply with all of those. Media, Carrie Hansen, who's kindergarten teacher at Pleasant Acres, if you ever need a feel-good time, go visit her classroom at Pleasant Acres, and she was, excuse me, recognized as the, uh, teacher of the week in the News-Desert. The student discipline report is in your packet. Um, and then the superintendent's evaluation, I'm letting you know that next month, my evaluation will be in the, um, December packet. It'll be on the agenda next month, because you want to talk about that.
Has that been sent out yet? So everybody's gotten it? Yeah. I, I would like to make that as our goal, if that's a kid with a wrist board, that we go ahead and do your own thing, and then Thursday, close session, we will discuss it. Next morning on the 15th of December. He would have his approval, so we can get that done. Discuss with Dr. Woods, what we think.
And just for, wait, go ahead and, for public reference, the, the evaluation of me, just like any employee, is, is a private conversation. So that's why it will, it takes place during closed session.
Thank you, I'll try and answer on that.
Alright, so we'll have closed session next month.
And, uh, let's see, we had student disciplines, so I wish the district organization chart revised. All that about.
Oh, I didn't even mention that.
Yeah.
Oh, I missed, I think, missed it. It was on the information items, it should have been there. Just, I, every few months or when we have position changes, I update the district's organizational chart, uh, which just shows who's in what department and does what. So I had to remove Mrs. Ramich, that was the only change this time. I had to remove Mrs. Ramich, that was the only change this time.
Are you still in charge?
You're still in charge. The board is above me on the chart.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Yes, we are. Yes. No silliness on this.
So I think we're on comments now.
Yes. Other comments?
Hi. Come to take?
Done.
I got a list. I'd like to know, first of all, how many subs are we averaging? Per week? It's one. I'd like to know if the Broad Meadow Initiative is being implemented district-wide at that level. It's two. I'd like to know if Dream is in every school.
No.
Three. If a student has 33 absences, we need to know the reasons. Something's wrong. Just not making it that 33 absences. Something's wrong. And if we have chronic absentees, and the parents haven't called in, a lot of parents are working. They don't even know the child is not at school. Also, I called the central office last week, last Friday. You did return my call, Mr. Woods. And it was because, at that very time, I saw 13 children get off the bus and walked straight away from Ada across the street toward Casey's. I spoke to them about it. Seven turned around and came back to the school. Six went across the street, had a conversation. Five came back this direction, and the one went on into Casey's. Okay? That's a lot of students to be getting on the bus, not coming into the school.
Do you know the reason for that?
Do I know the reason for them not coming into the school? Don't know, but I know that each one of them were not related to one another. So whatever the reason was, it couldn't have been just one reason.
No, I was just asking, can you give the reason why the students weren't coming to?
No, no. I did not know the reason why. It was 12 females and one male. And he immediately made a right turn, like, I don't know who he knows, but I'm going that way. The rest of them, some of them followed. The others went across. Six of them, they had a brief conversation. Five came back across the street. I picked up the phone, and I told them, you need to be at the school and not going across 45. And the group that went first heard me on the phone, and they walked a little bit faster. Okay? So the students, when they come here, and I've heard over and over, we're not responsible for them until the bell rings. But they are some responsible to there, because the parents are sending them to school. They're getting off that bus. They've been on the bus.
I was asking because I know that a lot of students walk over to Casey's for breakfast. And so I just didn't know if that could possibly be some of the reason why some of those students were walking across the street.
At that time, it shouldn't have been breakfast time.
Oh, okay.
They should have been coming.
Was it not before school?
It was at school, it was about to come in.
Oh, okay.
So they, when we're talking about absentee, if they're going over there, tardiness is just important. If you're not in school that first period, you start the day off wrong as it is. So now, I would not like to see absentee tied into retention. Now you got a bigger problem. You got a 14-year-old sitting up in seventh grade. Now you got a bigger problem, same as in high school. 18 years old, still in school, about to turn 20. Ms. Palmer said to me, when Dale sit down, I'm grown. She's 19. I'm grown. And that's the way they'll act if you're tying them in. If you're tying that into that, you're gonna have more of a problem. Now you really got bullying, because they are too old to be. We need to find out a way to find out why these students are not coming to school. Okay? Another. What do we do? We're talking about bullying, Section 7, colon, 180. What does the administrator, administration do when staff has targeted a particular student? What is being done about that? That's a conversation that we hear a lot. What is being done about that? I think, and we're gonna come back with it, any weapon that's brought to the school, especially if it's at the no-better level, should be brought to this board. You should not, Mr. Woods, have that discretion to decide who does, who does not get punished for it. Because you showed it up there, it's said, with the exception of. So you're taking it away from here and putting it in there. It was in writing. It was in writing, with the exception of. So it should not be a discretion, it should come to the board, period. If it was a weapon, it should come to the board. If they knew better, it was a weapon. I can understand junior forgetting at night that they was playing with a Swiss Army knife. First grade, second grade. But if junior is in the right mind and says, because Cindy talked dirty to me, talked bad to me, said something about me, and I'm gonna stick her, then junior knew better. It should be brought to the board. I don't think that you should have that discretion, not as a single person, because it puts you in a position to say who does and who does not get punished.
How do I decide who knows better?
How do you decide?
Bring only ones who know better.
No, no, no. I said, bring only, you made the statement that a two, a first or second grader or kindergarten could forget they had it. Okay? So how do you not punish, how can you punish a seventh grader?
I don't understand.
If you're saying that a first, second, or kindergarten forgot, that same forgot can be the seventh or eighth grader. Bring it to the board, let the board decide.
So all knives?
All.
Whether, that's not what you were saying.
Oh, I'm saying all. All should be brought to the board. Should be brought to the board. That's what the board. Bring it to the board. Let the board decide.
But if that's not our opinion, I understand and respect that as your opinion, but if that's not our opinion, if we feel like he doesn't need to bring everything to the board, then isn't that for us to decide?
It might be, you might be saying that's for you to decide, but if you go back to what was on this board, it said that it should be according to the written laws.
The board policy is what we follow, and the board policy does give the board the discretion. So.
Okay, you're saying that. Okay, so you don't follow Senate Bill ASBE? It's just this board?
We can have a conversation later, but I can show you what it says in the board policy that is in compliance with the law.
Okay, we can have a conversation later. I'm good with that. Okay? And, uh, right now, you're talking about an alternative program, again. How is that going to work for these students with lifelong skills? We're just going from one to the other, everything is, I understand?
Can I add something?
Go ahead.
And I, so my sister is in a special education PhD program, so we talk a lot about interventions and like things like that. There are certain students who could be provided, I think, more targeted care in a program like that, and I think that that is maybe what is being discussed more so than like shuffling kids somewhere. It's really trying to do right by those kids.
And my comment, can you be done?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
My comment was, at the high school, they have that alternative program.
Eagle.
Academy.
Eagle.
And I think they have evolved from the idea that, well, that's just for, you know, problem kids. You know, we got, you know, kids we don't want, just throw them in there.
Same to me.
Yes. But then to become a program where they are in there for specific things, and then soon as they reach those goals, they are, then they're out of there. My understanding, from what my wife says to me, she's on my school board. Okay, because I asked her about that, and I said, she keeps telling me, it's a program set up for students who look behind. And they get up to speed, and they go back to regular situation, most cases. Now that...
I understand.
Is that how you understand the high school?
I understand that. I was a part of it with day reg, I understand it. Okay? Is this the way this is gonna be set up? Or is this gonna be a long-term, what you're looking to do?
I just told the board we're working on putting together a proposal.
Just good ideas right now, yeah. It's not even proposed yet to us.
Okay.
Just go, so before you go, I want to thank you for what you did, for those children to get back. Thank you.
I live here.
I know, I appreciate that, thank you.
So will I be able to get the answers to the questions that I have?
All written down here.
I wrote them all down. And I said I'd give you a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four, two, ten comments?
I have a comment. I got to meet with some of the teachers over at Pleasant Acres yesterday. And I'd say, the experience is really positive. And, you know, some of the challenges that the teachers face, and I can't believe that, you know, not one of these teachers is here, you know, because they want to be here. So I just wanted to say thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you. Thank you for going yesterday, I appreciate that. And Diana was there too.
Yeah, I've had the pleasure to go to all this, not all the schools, because I'm visiting Eastland tomorrow, but I've been to Broad Meadow, North Beach, Pleasant Acres this week. And the atmosphere is very welcoming.
Thank you.
The teachers are very, you know, you know, you could, they're stressors, you know what they have day-to-day, but you can tell that every single staff that came into that workroom or lounge is here because they have a passion for what they're doing. And every single word that comes out of their mouth, it's, you can tell. And I'm proud to say that we have very good teachers in this. Thank you for all you do.
I have something I want to say.
Yes.
I would like to do a shout-out to all the kids at Ada that made honor roll. There were so many of them, and the assembly was amazing how they all lined up. I think there was like 143 or something like that.
That is the exact number.
Between sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students that made honor roll and high honor roll. And it was just absolutely amazing to see that number of kids standing up in that. So, yes, shout-out to them. Great job, very proud of them. And I do have a lot more that I want to say, but I did not have a chance to write my speech down. And I want to collect my thoughts, and, but yes, it's coming next month.
Vales?
Alright. I did want to make sure the board and public know that since our last board meeting, we did close a classroom in the district. It was a self-contained special education class, meaning we closed it for attendance for two days. Not like we closed the room forever. All the adults who work in the room and one student were sick. It's not likely, I don't, when I sent the email to the board, I said, oh my gosh, I don't want everyone thinking we're gonna start closing them. Because November 9th last year, two years ago, we shut the district down for three weeks. I got that memory on my Facebook page. So it was an issue where, in some of those special settings, we have a lot of, we're not gonna be able to get enough specialized staff to operate a room that serves our self-contained special ed kids. So we reach out to the parents that, as soon as we make the decision, let them know. So hopefully, we're gonna avoid that. I think our attendance rates would have to get really bad for us to be doing it. So we can close, this is what I've learned since COVID. We can close classrooms, we can close grade levels, we can close individual schools if we get to a point where too many people are out. Okay? I doubt we would close the whole school ever for illness. We were only at that point when we were requiring staff and students to be out due to COVID. This year, our staff that have had COVID are typically out while they have symptoms, and then they're able to return, so it's not a 10-day absence. District closures, one thing I'd like the board to think on at some point, and I had a conversation with the Teachers Association this week also. Do you want me to close school when it's a snow day? Or do you want me to go on the remote learning plan? This was like very controversial last year. So remote learning plan means that your student at home is supposed to be doing schoolwork. It also means that the teachers are supposed to have planned in advance for the unknown snow day when they are going to do work. So it's a little more complicated right now, because we don't send devices home with kids. We don't, I don't know. So I just, I'm already thinking about the first snow day coming. We have the Friday, we, our last day of school this year is the Friday before Memorial Day. So any snow day means we go after Memorial Day weekend. So I'm gonna bet you're gonna say you get to make the decision on this. I'll just do what Mr. Mario does. Alright. So we do have the five remote learning days. I, in my discussions with the teachers, I think we're leaning towards traditional snow days. And then we're gonna have to play it by ear on leather after that. So last year, part of it was, we had used some of our emergency closure days for COVID, and then we had a lot of snow days. So we exhausted the five emergency closure days, the remote learning days that we had. So, does that make sense?
Yes.
It's just, no matter what we do, we're going to get feedback on that one, so.
I was getting back.
I prefer a real snow day, just because I like to just go play with my kids in the snow, so. Alright, the annual report is, initially, the report, when we first started doing it three years ago, it was a November report. Last year, it was a December and January report. This year, we do not yet have our audit for our annual financial report. So I need the audit and the annual financial report to do the district's annual report.
So why don't we have that?
Why don't we have the audit? Yes, our auditor does not have it done yet. That's why, we don't do the audit, so. And so I guess I'm informing the board and asking them for permission that we delay the district report until at least January. So the audit, fingers crossed, will be presented next month. And then that'll give me some time to plug in those audit numbers. And then that'll give me some time to plug in those audit numbers and for the annual report. So is that fine?
I see you're seeing it on your hit notes.
All right. Jenny Ferrerix applied for a federal mental health grant, which is a big one. It would be about $5 million, a million dollars a year for five years. And that would be for providing mental health services to our students. And other supportive services, I should say that, not just directly mental health services. triple I is next week. That is the state convention. You, Hannah probably talked to all of you before the meeting, didn't she? Yes, that's why you all have a folder. That's why you all have a folder at your table. Hannah is who you talked to with any questions on that. That is all I had for my reports. And thank you all the members for doing the lunches. I've eaten way too many cookies.
Me too.
During lunches.
Will, will there be any left tomorrow when I go?
There are 100 on my desk right now.
Will there be 100?
I don't know, sir. I don't know.
Mine would like to know. Anybody else? Tyler?
I'm going to make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold? No.
Thank you.